Please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. I think we might be getting a storm maybe coming soon.
Yeah.
Looks a little dark toward west. I'd like to report, report we're about two inches lower from our last meeting. Yay.
It's going the right way.
Not height, water. So, I think it's been a long time since we could say that. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufel.
Here.
Krista Regan.
Here.
Kristy Hiltonen.
Absent excuse.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine here, Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Okay, bills payable, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
Report.
Hey, motion support, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes, Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Motion passes. And next we have supervisors report. And like in the past, most, like ninety-five percent of it is talking about water. Just as this one. And like I just mentioned, we are going down just a little bit and everything's pretty, pretty much predicated on rainfall from now on. We did receive twenty thousand sandbags that were free through the Corps of Engineers. And I think we're gonna get another ten thousand tomorrow. And so that puts us about five hundred and thirty-five thousand sandbags that we've distributed. Plus, we've been going through, you know, pretty close to seventy yards of sand today for people. We've been doing our processing orders, I, we started this last week, or last two weeks ago for these airy water diverter tubes. I got a pretty good deal of government discount on it and we're passing along to, to, to the, you know, people who, who is in need of them. Got an order for about, I don't know, about four hundred tubes so far, it's been pretty overwhelming as far as my, on my end. Company's having a hard time to fill the orders and we're getting partial shipments coming out, which makes it a little more challenging on, on our end to let people know when they're coming, because everyone's pretty anxious. And I'm just processing them as first, you know, I get the orders in first, that's who we're contacting first to fulfill the orders. We do have a shipment, well, a big one coming, it says it's on track, well, I think it's in Chicago right now, it says, oh, it'll be here this, tomorrow, but the way it's been doing, that means it'll probably be delivered to us on Wednesday. So I'll, I'll know more information on that when I get a hold of yellow freight. And that's, that's a large, a large order that's coming, that's gonna be probably at least two-thirds of, of the people who, who have them ordered. And I just got an email about an hour ago from the company, they're actually back ordering the material to make the, the tubes right now and he's gonna check on, on that tomorrow to see how, how it, how it is. I mean, I was overwhelmed, overwhelmed the company. I mean, it is what it is. So we're trying our best. I know our emergency manager, they, they, from the county, they did another assessment last week of the township and mostly of primary residents, that's what, you know, they're really concerned of. And they did not find any full-time homes that were majorly affected, in other words, their first floor wet. They might have a wet garage, you can lift things up, wet yard, yards and, and such, but nothing that, in the township, that's severely affected as far as water on the first floor. County Road, they built up, and kudos to them, they, they built up quite a bit Anchor Bay Drive with stone and finished the third bridge on, on Anchor Bay Drive. And probably when things get a little more secure this fall, they'll be repaving that road. Been working hard on several other roads, Colony Road, Riverside, Marina, Park Lane, Frank Street, Bayview Shores, Golf Course on the island and others, you know, that are underwater and, and if they, if there's a way that they can berm it off and, and make them dry, you know, they've been working hard on that. Sometimes they would get one secured and dry and something would happen and poof, it floods again. So it, it's been a struggle, but I give them lots of kudos and working very hard on it. I had an interesting, I, I got included on a conference call this, late, late last week. It was with the International Joint Commission that regulates the outflows on Saint Mary's River, that's leaving Superior into Lake Huron. I'm not sure if I was really intended to be on that call, but I got an invite, so I got, I was able to, to log in and be on the call and I actually answered, or got to ask a few questions. It was very interesting, it, up there, and I didn't realize it a hundred percent till, till now, they, they explained it to me. You know, there's a, a power, a hydro plant on the Canadian side and the US side where they generate electricity through, through the water. And in there, there's a total of sixteen divergent gates, or kind of call them compensatory gates. And what they're, they're meant to do, at some times they have to shut down one or both of the, the hydro plants with no water in it. And then they, they let out, they, they open these other gates, so, you know, it doesn't flood behind them. On a typical, typical conditions, they will have four gates open running through the Saint Mary's River. And they, they changed their treaty in two thousand twelve where their, their job is to mimic the outflow of the Saint Mary's River if there is no structure whatsoever in there. So in other words, they, they're not supposed to keep Superior artificially high or artificially low like they were before two thousand twelve. They're supposed to mimic what, what, what the normal outflow would be with no structure. So in other words, if they had a lot of rain in Superior, you know, that, they're gonna increase the outflow on the Saint Mary's River leading into Lake Huron and Lake Michigan. So right now, like I say, four gates is normal. Right now they have six gates open because they had a wet season as everybody did up in Superior. And I asked the question, if, so they got two more gates, what is, what would the change of Lake Huron and ultimately Lake St. Clair in the levels, if those two gates were open for one year total? What would be the, the total, you know, effect on Lake Huron? And they told me Lake Huron would go up about an inch and a half, maybe two inches from those two additional gates. Lake St. Clair would be less than that and they're not sure, they didn't know, have those calculations. So they, they, they do say, you know, it, it does, it does affect our, our, our levels, but not as much as a lot of people think so. I know a lot of people argument, argue with it and said it's all about that and, but according to them on this call, they're, they're pretty straightforward with us. That, you know, they, they, right now there's six gates open and normally there's four. And yeah, probably raise the, the level of Lake Huron and Lake Michigan up an inch and a half from what it would be with just four. But they gotta deal with high water in Superior also. But like I say, they, they, under their new treaty, they, they don't, they can't artificially keep Superior higher or lower than what it normally would be without any diversions in this river whatsoever. It was an interesting phone call, it probably lasted about two hours and it was a lot of information. One thing that's pretty cool, we're getting a lot of volunteers to, to come forward to help people. I know so far we had work parties with Woodside Church, Bible Church, Elgynack Robotics, a big group on Maynard Street, had a big block party Sunday. I got some troopers from the Michigan State Police reached out to me, they're talking about two days of doing a, a work party. And just Saturday, UAW contacted me about doing some sandbagging parties too. So, you know, that's going forward and we're trying to get some help for some people that can't help themselves. As far as, you know, everyone says, oh, are we at a state of emergency, you know, it's a local emergency. I don't think we're going to meet the threshold that is required for us to call a state of emergency with the governor. I mean, we could ask for it, but we're nowhere near the threshold. And what they encounter, what expenses, I, I know it's all the expenses that we're, we're occurring to help people and to protect our public infrastructure and that type of thing. But as far as private property structure, you know, they, they don't think it's, it's a problem if your garage wet, if your yard's covered with, with water. If you have water coming over your seawall and you got some land erosion, that's not a state of emergency to the governor. They, they're looking at damage from the first floors being wet. And like I say, we set up, set up assessment teams, I think a total of three or four times and we haven't really found much at all, we have a few cottages. But we're, we're keeping track of all our costs and they are mounting. But I don't think we're going to, in fact, even people say, well, my crawl space is full of water, you know, that, that doesn't cut it as far as a, a state of emergency. We, we have been having issues with sewer infiltration, I'm gonna ask John to come up here a second. We're gonna be sending a letter and we, we have people that are pumping water into the sewer system and compromising our sewer system. Normally, what are we, about two million per gallon?
Yeah, typically our flow at the plant would be between two and three million a day and we're hitting six and seven million.
Six and seven million, so.
Infiltration is, is pretty significant. It's, it's overwhelmed our system, we struggle with it every single day.
Yeah.
We are sealing up manholes, you know, pump stations are running at max capacity. It's been a, a big event for us. And the biggest culprits are naturally, we've got manholes underwater and that type of thing, but individual residents are popping cleanouts, pumping crawl spaces, you know, under their house, pumping their crawl spaces, hooking up illegal sump pumps to the sanitary sewer lead. And also popping manholes in their yards. So, as already said, we're gonna send a, a mailer out to the sewer customers. We ask that you please refrain from doing that, it's imperative that we get a grip on our system, so.
Yeah, I know we had some issues down Colony and Anchor Bay Drives and everything and it was to the point where our, our sewer system was so taxing, we, all, all our pumps were running and our pump stations full, full blast, full speed. And, you know, we were starting to get sewer backed up in people's showers and bathtubs and, and things.
That's correct.
Or, or we were pumping it so hard, it was actually pushing other roads, was having issues with it. And I know we.
We almost lost all facilities to Anchor Bay Drive.
Yes.
So, and that's why you'll, if you look at number three on the agenda, that's one of the things I want to address tonight, so.
Right, yeah, it, it, it was a challenge and we actually had to pop up over manholes and say, oh, we got a lot of flow here, you know, you kind of follow it.
It was close to a, a big emergency.
Yeah, and we were, we were cammering to, to see, okay, well, th- this feed's coming in and we crawl under someone's.
Well, that's the other thing, is we are going to camera the critical areas in the township and you can voluntarily disconnect or we're gonna find it, so.
Yeah.
And if we do find it and we know it's intentional, there's a pretty good fine that goes with it, so.
Yeah, I, I know, that's why we're sending the letter out. And, you know, instead of pumping the sewer, you know, it's all gonna end up in the river anyhow, it's not gonna change the level of the water. Pump it back, you know, pack into the water, into the river.
Well, that's the easy way out, but a lot of people don't realize how much it jeopardizes the sewer system.
Exactly, 'cause I mean, we're, we're close to, like John said, losing the whole system out in a, a big chunk of our, in our township. And if, if, if we push that much water into our wastewater treatment plant, we'd be subject to fines from the DEQ too.
Correct.
So.
Which affects our rates.
Yep, exactly, so I just wanted to mention that. Thanks, John.
Yep.
I, you know, we, we've been fielding so many phone calls, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the, the main ones. We, I'm getting a lot of calls, you know, hey, I sandbagged front of my house, my neighbor hasn't. What, what can, what can you do? And unfortunately, it is private property, we really can't go on private property and, and sandbag or, or force them to do what's right, unfortunately. I know some cities are, some towns are. It was, I kind of anticipated this about three months ago, I, I brought it up to the Corps of Engineers, their emergency management team. And, you know, the town, Clay Township has a hundred and forty miles of shoreline. And I kind of estimated it would probably be about twenty, thirty miles that, you know, is unprotected. And I asked the Corps, can you guys come out and help us out? And it said, Artie, we don't have that ma- much resources and sand and manpower equipment to do that. So, I mean, in my opinion, and, and we talked about it as a board before, you know, we can't enforce it even if we, if we did say, okay, you have to fix your, your property. And, and it goes one step further, half the townships owned by the state of Michigan and unregrettably, they've done nothing for flood mitigation. And so, as a township, we're gonna go in and tell the state, you have to sandbag or, or do a berm? And there's, they're gonna say, no. And if we did it for them, they're, they're not gonna pay it or anything, so we're kind of in a no-win situation as long as that. I just, you know, I reach out to people, I say, you know, talk to your neighbors, see if they'll let you do something or, or, you know, try to work it out. It seems like in eighty-six, we, we didn't have these issues back then and it's, it's too bad. I'm getting other complaints that, you know, the neighbor built his property up six inches and that's the reason I'm flooding. Normally not, I mean, how our ordinance works is, you know, they could build their property up, they have to maintain their own runoff water for rainwater. And usually they put in a French drain or some kind of drain along the property lines to go out to the seawall. Well, unfortunately, those are working backwards now, because the water in the river is so high. And I've probably went out and saw several, several of the same thing and, I mean, if your property's low, it, it's gonna be, water's gonna get there, it's gonna seep through, it's, it's gonna get there one way or another, unless you have a berm and you pump. But if, if someone's built up their property, you know, six inches or so, yeah, they're dry, you may, you. Sorry, guys. Big thunder. But, you know, you might not be dry and, you know, chances are it's coming from the ditch or the river or, or, or just through the, the normal groundwater. I, I know it's frustrating, I've actually had people call me, Artie, the reason I'm flooding is because my neighbor's putting, running their sprinkler system and sprinkling their, 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 their grass. And it's, well, if they weren't watering their yard, do you think you'd still be flooded? Well, yeah, so. But, and then still, we have a lot of people calling about, you know, the, the boats making waves and turning into a no-wake area. Like I mentioned before, we're, I doubt if we're gonna make the threshold to call it a state of emergency with the governor and the governor's not even gonna, the governor's the only one that can make a, executive order to make a temporary no-wake. And she said the only way that that will happen is if a state of emergency is declared. And if we don't meet the threshold, you know, that's not gonna happen. I will say, maybe contrary to public opinion, we stepped up enforcement quite a bit, our own police boat's been out there. I've actually seen pictures of social media of them writing tickets and, and doing a good job, I know the sheriff's been out there. We've had more patrols with the DNR also, and Border Patrol for that matter, so. Doing the best we can as far as, as the no wakes. But then again, if you really think it's possible for the township or the Marine Patrol to stop every boat from making a wave in the river, well, I got some land I'll sell you too that's underwater. I mean, it's not gonna happen and we'd like it to, but it's, it's just not gonna happen. And unfortunately, some of these boats, they could be six hundred feet out within the, the law and their wave is still gonna go up over your seawall. It's just the, our environment that we are in, living in right now. I don't know, with a little bit of luck and if God doesn't rain on us too hard tonight, you know, maybe we'll be four or five inches lower in a month, I hope. So, that's it on high water. I just wanted to mention too, the Colony Water Main Project is pretty much in place. We do have a, a, a pretty substantial punch list of issues with individual property owners we're working through. And the, you know, a lot of landscaping issues, a few people are having problems with their sprinkler system or alarm or something that got damaged when they did the water line. And we're addressing those as best as we can with the contractor. And in my mind, we're gonna withhold, you know, final payment until, and this is substantial good payment, until that punch list is pretty well knocked out and everyone's pretty happy. I, I was just down there today, I mean, they, there's a lot of, these new fire hydrants, there's, they, they really haven't successfully seeded and now there's, there's, you know, foothaul weeds going around them. And, you know, they're gonna have to kill those weeds and get some seed in there or better yet sod and, and make it right. I know, I wouldn't want that in my front yard if I have a nice lawn, so. We're working on that too. So, other than that, we have a lot of Parks and Rec stuff going on, I'm not gonna get into that, but if you're on Facebook, like us on Clay Township, Parks and Rec and, or call our, call our office up, we got all kinds of information. That wasn't so bad, was it? All right, moving on. Public comments, do we have any one for public comments tonight? You guys want, any public comments? You're not public. Okay. All right, no public comments. Moving right along, consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting of July first, two thousand nineteen, check reports, treasures report, road watch, communication, library minutes of four, four nineteen, the resignation of Sid Brown, request from the assessor, assessor Lawton for training, which is two hundred and ten dollars plus three nights lodging.
Report.
Yeah, motion support, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. And next we have the chiefs, fire chiefs report. Hey, George, George has been a busy man.
Yeah, we were. Good evening. Chiefs report for June, I attended two meetings in the month of June, one was with the St. Clair County Chiefs Association, general business was discussed, and then one with the US Coast Guard and the final plans on Jobbie Noonner. I also attended a luncheon for Commander Wooster, who is the commander for Coast Guard Detroit. He is leaving us, he's been detailed to Washington DC, we're gonna miss him, he was one of our key players with the ICS program with the, the Fire Department and the Police Department, so we will miss him. Fire Department conducted a, a tour on the fireboat at the North Channel Yacht Club, we handed out handouts and gave a tour of the, of the boat. Met with the Army.
Squared any of the kids?
Huh?
Squared any of the kids?
No, we didn't square any kids. Met with the Army Corps of Engineers about Station Two, about the water around it and, you know, Hearthstown's lions, not much was done, not much help. They said we could get sandban, sandbags for thirteen cents a piece, no sand and no labor, so not much help there. Jobbie Noonner, we responded to fifteen calls, we had some lacerations, severed fingers as you know, crushed hands. And I would like to thank Elginack Fire Department, St. Clair Fire Department, Tri-Hospital and our firefighters at Township, Clay Township for job well done.
I, I just want to mention, we, we have to do something for the, the Lions Hall, because that's a shelter and our station over on the island. And we're gonna be looking at putting a, a barrier. And actually, it makes sense, instead of hooking it around and, and back through, it's, it actually goes straight across and will actually help out three residents to, to put, they, they have a berm in the back and basically, we're gonna go from La Croix straight back to their back berm and then so you can pump that area out.
I was over there today and Mr. Shemansky has a berm from.
Right.
The north side around the trap houses all the way to the east and they're pumping that out now. And he asked me what our plans were and I said, we're working on it, so.
So, I think we're gonna have to get a bigger one than the twelve-inchers that we've been dealing with. But I think it would be cheaper and more effective if we got some, one of these bigger hydro barriers than us trying to do it with sand ourselves. What do we figure, about two, three hundred feet?
Something like that, I think, didn't we, John?
Yeah, so we're gonna be looking at, at doing something there, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Hey, unfinished business, we have none. Under new business, first thing, to prove a job description of our building official and then, you know, they are two independent jobs, then the building inspector. And the first one is on the building official. I read the, I, under the building official, number two, it says maintains appropriate staffing and ensure work is completed in a timely manner, blah, blah, blah. I'm not sure, personally, I'm not sure if that's a function of the building official or the township board to maintain appropriate staffing.
I did minimize some of these that had to pertain to staffing because that is a board function and I, we, we can take that off. I didn't.
Right. I mean, I.
I may have missed a couple of small parts.
Okay, I mean, that's the first thing I'm thinking, you know, I, I don't know if that's the real function of our.
No.
Of our building official, you know.
I think I can start with ensures work is completed.
Yes.
To zone work.
Right. Okay, that's the only thing I was gonna bring up. So. So on each one of these job duties, is there a standard operating procedure?
For the building department, no.
Not yet. So, shouldn't we postpone this until we have each one of those outlined?
No, just by law we have to have a job description.
I mean. That we're gonna be in the same boat we are now.
Well, by law we have to have a job description, so we need to pass a job description.
I mean, we could have operating procedure, processes and procedure or policies, I guess, come after this. I'd make a motion that we accept the building official's job description whilst we strike out under number two, maintains appropriate staffing. So it would start, ensure work is. So it would start, ensure work is completed in a timely manner.
Support.
Do we have any discussion?
So, once we get this back with the changes in it, we're going to have to approve it again or take a look at it? And if it's wrong, what do we do?
No, his motion was to approve it, just striking from typical duties, number two, maintains appropriate staffing too.
So, it would, it, it would start, ensure work is completed in a timely manner.
We put in something in the motion that, um, this could be subject to some policy changes?
Uh, it would, it would be regardless.
Policy changes don't change a job description.
Right.
But I mean-
That's just another level of-
It indicates that these above statements are intended to describe the general nature and level of work being performed, not to be construed as exhaustive.
I'd like to see in here, as far as the job description, that he maintains a spreadsheet of pending inspections, completing, uh, of status.
That's a report that can be pulled out of BSNA at any time.
Yeah, that's-
So, when I walk into the building department, I got to go pull that report out? I just can't look at a spreadsheet and see where we're at?
Right.
I don't-
Well, it changes daily.
Wouldn't that fall under number one? That says maintains appropriate building permit records?
Mm-hmm. Well, it does fall under another one, but I'm looking for a spreadsheet.
Yeah, they can-
I don't know what it looks like.
Mark, there's, there's a disconnect right now between what our, our previous acting building official was doing and our township record-keeping of BSNA software, right? There's an extreme disconnect. So, all the other departments use the BSNA software. There is a way, um, after talking to several department heads and, and the clerk and, and there is a way to update BSNA software to reflect current status of open permits. So, the report that you're looking for has never existed with our former official. Um, so what we're trying to do is, is set a baseline. Um, and I, and I don't think, at any time, our board can't bring this up in the next meeting and amend the job description. Um, but it's, you know, I, I look at it as a positive step. It's a step forward and, and I think it's a, it's a pretty good step, although, albeit maybe not perfect, um, but it's a good step.
Well, I know the zoning enforcer used to give, uh, open cases and closed and we could probably create a report that we put in, in, in our packet once a month, too.
That'd be acceptable.
Okay.
I agree, that's something that's definitely needed. I just don't know that it's something that should hold up the approval of a job description. That could be added in another level of paperwork.
Any more discussion?
For number 11, it says enforces dangerous building ordinances and goes on about notices for public hearings and demolition. Does that mean this position works with the code enforcer? Position?
Code enforcement doesn't do dangerous buildings.
Yeah, yeah, that's the building inspector that does.
All of number 11 is just, okay.
So, can you, uh, repeat the motion with the, uh-
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I, uh, the motion is that approve the, the, um, building official job description, except under two, we'd strike out maintains appropriate staffing two. And it would start, number two would start, ensure work is completed in a timely manner, and continue on down.
And the, uh, monthly document for outstanding, uh, building permits?
Well, that would be a report that just as any of our departments have going on.
Yeah, we can generate that report. Actually, probably Cindy would probably generate that report, not so much the building official.
So, I can talk to her about, um, what she can put together. She's just trying to get in a groove right now with new practices and they're, they're trying to figure out what their procedures are going to be over there, so.
Let me know if they need help.
Commitment report.
I can certainly help them out.
BSNA, they, they'll, they'll customize any report we want, too. They're pretty good at it. So, okay. All right, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the edited job, uh, description for the building official? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And next we have the, uh, job description for the building inspector.
Where does it say who he reports to?
Up on top.
General summary.
In general summary, uh, the supervisor is the township supervisor.
First line.
Second line on the right.
I was expecting to see that in the responsibilities, other than, other than the head. But-
Well-
Whatever.
The supervisor's township supervisor, but day-to-day, under general summary, the first line says, "Under the super, general supervision, day-to-day would be the building Primarily because the building official is aware of building codes, um, not so much necessarily the supervisor of the township. But ultimately, all of the employees of the township have to report to somebody on the
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, job description for the building inspector.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next we have is to appoint Gary Barrell as our building official and, uh, inspector and plan reviewer. Uh, as you recall, we appointed him as an interim. And, uh, basically, I'd like to drop the interim off and make him the guy.
I'll make a motion to approve and appoint Gary Barrell as our building official, inspector and plan reviewer.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, DPW, we have a, a, we put on the agenda a lift pump purchase and at the time, we didn't have any quotes. And I think Mr. DeBoyer will fill us in, fill in the spaces.
So, actually, I'd like to talk to you about a couple of things due to high water. Due to our excessive high water, our pump stations, as we talked about earlier, are at max capacity. And, um, we have 12 stations throughout the township. Each station has two pumps. They're designed to alternate one pump at a time. We've ran into situations where both pumps have been running at one time and we could barely keep up with the flow. So, one of my concerns is if we get into that situation, which we have been two times in the last 30 days, if we get into that situation, we lose a pump, we could be in a bad spot. So, I'm proposing that we purchase a pump to put on the shelf for an emergency situation if that were to happen. One thing I found out on, when I did my research on the, on the pumps, is of the 12 stations that we have, I believe there's four or five different pumps for all the stations. And Kennedy, who did the quote, um, on the flight pump, it's called a flight conservator, they told me that is a programmable pump that they can program RPMs, gallons per minute. And essentially, what that pump would do is fit all but one of our pump stations throughout the township. So, we would have to purchase one of those and then a flight CP3127, which is a specific pump for Station 4 on Anchor Bay Drive. And the reason for that pump being different is that, um, that pump pumps into the force main that comes across M29 from Ira Township. So, that requires higher head pressure, so we would need a special pump for that, so. Um, so, so I'm requesting, I'm, I'm proposing and asking for your authority to buy a flight conservator programmable pump and a flight CP3127 for Station 4 as backup pumps, um, to have an emergency situation.
In, in the past, um, we very rarely had to run both pumps at the same time, so if one pump went down, we could rely on another pump and it would take, what's it take? A couple of weeks sometimes?
To get a pump?
To get a pump?
Yes.
10 days or so to get a pump. And it was no, no big deal, but if one went down now and took 10 days, we might, well, however, we'll be in trouble. Um, and, uh, so, uh, I know John's been a little worried about it and, uh, um, so yes.
How long does it take you to pumps in and install them?
Um, the conservator is in stock. The other one that he told me is, uh, probably two, three weeks.
That's pro- uh, the-
The programmable is the conservator, yes.
That's in stock, you said?
Yes.
We, we-
So, that would cover all but one of our stations.
We use Kennedy quite a bit. They're good with their prices.
They're the exclusive distributor for flight pumps, yes.
Okay, that's it, man.
In southeast Michigan.
How old are our current pumps, would you guess?
They vary, Chris. Um, some are 10, 12 years old, some are two years old, so.
Okay. What kind of a shelf life do you think this pump would have?
Unlimited. Yeah. We're going to use these at some point regardless, so that's the thing. It's not money thrown to the wind, so.
So, it's a degree of insurance, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
And speaking of insurance, any of these pumps have failed? Did, uh, is there any insurance or maintenance agreement on them or anything like that?
Um, none have failed under the maintenance agreement, no.
If we weren't in this situation we are right now, having to run both of them occasionally, what would be the timeframe that we would have to do this anyway?
Um, huh.
If one fails?
Yeah, it would be a phone call, "We got to do this right now," so.
It's not a matter of if, more a matter of when.
And the demand that's being put on these pumps daily is pretty significant, so.
When was the last time we had, and all the pumps, I think it was two years ago?
Uh, I think two or three years ago, yes.
The one by, uh, down by SASS, isn't it?
Uh, Anchor Bay Drive.
Anchor Bay Drive, okay, yeah. All right. So, John's basically asking for, um, the flight programmable pump is $12,975. And then the higher fixed flow pump for Station 4 is $12,415, for a total of 25,390.
You have that in your budget?
No.
Absolutely not.
I was just going to say, this was not a budget.
And, you know, we talked about that a little bit today, um, how we could pay for that. And I know there's some emergency funding that you had set up. Potentially, we could pay for both of these items out of that.
So, if we, Cindy, if we made a motion, uh, what, line item or just emergency funding?
It would be under, um, emergency management, which is 101-443-960.
And that, we will end up tweaking that number as we go forward. All right, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of number one, flight, uh, concepter programmable pump for $12,975. And the flight CP3127 fixed pump flow, Station Number 4, for $12,415, for a total of $25,390. Line item, emergency funding, 101-443.960.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupfer?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, second, uh, issue that we're having that we have to deal with at some point in time is, uh, we have, um, how many hydr- or 12 hydrants?
12.
That are basically underwater. And, um, before winter comes and it gets cold, we have to, uh, do some drastic-
Secure them.
Yeah, secure them, do some maintenance. Um, in fact, the Army Corps of Engineers with all their engineers, what do they have? Three or four of them?
Yeah, we've picked some of the greatest minds and nobody can give us an answer yet, so.
Uh, how, how to deal with it? And they just, boy, we've never seen that before.
Yeah, so.
And they didn't give us a solution. John, we know what the solution is.
I mean, I honestly believe we need to essentially coffered in them off with seawall material.
Yep.
Fill in the, the area and raise the hydrant, so.
I was, I was going to, I was going to say raising, raising the hydrant will probably solve a lot of the problem.
And that makes it accessible to George's crew, you know,
That is true.
to be able to approach it, too, then.
And, and some other residents.
Right. So, that, that's what this proposal is and, and these are, I tried to get as close as I could. It's a, it's, it's approximately, um, uh, 27 sheets per hydrant. Those are 18-inch sheets on, on the width and they're eight footers. So, we would need, uh, 27 sheets per hydrant. And then I have the additional 17 yards of fill, which is approximate. Um, and, and then you'll see the breakdown up above for, for all 12 of them. So, that's, that's what I'm asking for, is the sheeting and the, and the dirt to fill in around the hydrant.
That's the 10-gauge, you said, galvanized?
That, that is, um, yeah, if you look at the, the little email in the back there, um, that is eight-foot-long, 10-gauge, yes. That's the lighter weight material.
Yeah, we don't need heavyweight, because-
No, that's, that's more than sufficient, Mark, for, for that application.
And, uh, how long do you think those last before they rust out?
Before the wire will go down.
Yeah. I, I don't know, 20 years, maybe? I don't know. I don't know if you want, I'll be worried about it.
Are they going to be susceptible to salt?
I'm just asking. Yeah, salt, road salt. I would assume they are.
Well, the heavier, it would be substantially more.
Well, it's about 25% more.
Yeah.
For the seawall.
Is there any other, uh, material recommended, other than, uh?
Uh, I don't, I think that would do what we need to do. Obviously, our manpower, but-
I'm just looking lon- longevity on the, on the stuff.
Well, we, I mean, we were talking to Corps of Engineers, using these HESCO bags, their barriers with sand and all these other things that-
Yeah.
and they, they just wouldn't work.
Yeah, the unknown factor is we don't know how long it's going to stay up. So, it's got to go through the winter and stay in place and-
And, uh-
Hopefully, we'll go through all that and won't need it up there next year.
I hope you're right, Cindy, absolutely.
Let's do it.
So, this, the total is, estimate is, uh, $22,283 to, uh, secure these, uh, 12 hydrants.
And budget-wise?
Not budget, we do the same thing.
Are we sure on the engineering? Are we sure this is going to work?
You're looking at the engineers!
It's our best solution?
I, I feel it is, Chris. I mean, I, we've really talked about it and threw it around and I think it is the best solution.
And the Army Corps of Engineers basically tells us, "I don't know."
Yeah, like I said, we asked the pros and they didn't have an answer, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, the, the steel is the big commitment, right?
It is, absolutely.
I'm wondering if, if, if we had two or three in and, and we weren't seeing the results, that would be-
Absolutely.
Right, are we, are we, are we bound? Are we, are we stuck or can, can we?
My, my plan would be to do one and then reassess it and go, "Is this going to work or is it not?"
That's what I was looking for.
But if it does work, this is where we would go with it.
Did you happen to call anybody in New Orleans?
I did not.
Their problem is their water goes down and they don't have ice.
Correct. I did call Harrison Township and some of these other communities and nobody's dealing with it as bad as we are, so.
And if we don't do this?
Uh, we have a risk of losing fire hydrants this winter. And when I say lose it, I mean sheared off, water mains blowing, hard to get to.
Compromising the water system.
Yeah, so.
Point, point of interest, on the island by the marina, there's a-
Point, point of interest, on the island by the marina, there's a little pump basin when you turn to go in.
Which marina, Joanne?
Tajmo.
Oh, okay.
And that little pump basin has been in there, steel seawall.
Sure.
For thirty years.
Since eighty-six.
You know, and, and it's.
Bobby put it in eighty-six.
And the salt trucks go down and, and there's nothing wrong with it.
Right.
So it will get some lifetime.
So I'm gonna say thirty years, Mark.
Yeah.
Are all twelve of these hydrants on the island?
I'm sorry?
All twelve of these hydrants on the island?
Yes. So far, the mainland's holding up pretty good, so.
Where are you buying this product from?
Well, obviously, the seawall, it was through Jensen Bridge, which I don't know as if there's a, a better supplier. The dirt, I am going to try to acquire from someone on Harrison's Island. I think that will be the most economical option, so. Yes.
Superintendent DeBoyer, I will make a motion to approve the seawall material for shoring in the fire hydrants, twelve hydrants, approximately twenty-seven seawall sheets each, seventeen yards of fill for each hydrant, for a total of twenty-two thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars to one oh one four four three nine sixty. Expecting that if it's not working out, that you would come back to the board with something different.
Absolutely.
I'll support that.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion, any questions for John? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupfer?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. We've all been busy, haven't we?
Indeed, indeed.
All right, the fourth thing on agenda is please to renew our leads online system, and we've been doing this for about three or four years now, and it's a great tool.
Probably longer, longer than that now.
Yeah, it's a great tool that we use for the police department.
Can you explain the leads online? I know you have done this every year, but we'll do it again.
That is a, that's a web-based program that we use that monitors and tracks sales of merchandise that people sell, like pawn shops, eBay, Craigslist, things like that. And you'd be surprised at just how many things that have been stolen out there that we get the, just that, the leads, and we get convictions out of.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get pinged a month or two after the fact.
Yeah, and what's nice about it is, we can actually go in there and put certain items that we're looking for, and if something similar comes across, it'll flag it, send us an email, we can go in and check it out, and if it is ours, they will, and by law, they have to keep that merchandise until, until we follow up on our investigation, so.
So you use this quite frequently?
Yes. That's excellent tool.
I'll make a motion to renew the leads online contract for two thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars coming from line two oh seven dash nine three two.
Support. Motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have ID Networks renewal for ninety-five thirty.
This, this is our CAD system, as well as our records management system. It's pretty much been the same thing for several years. They have not upped the price on us. ID Networks have been pretty good as far as that goes. But this is pretty much the heart of our infrastructure, as far as when it comes down to any report writing, records keeping, and the, as well as the mobile within our, our units on the road, so.
That's just a one-year maintenance agreement?
Yeah.
And how often do they come out?
We got twenty-four seven mobile, or support with them, automated support, and they're great.
So they come out whenever you need them, plus, what, how many times a month or year?
Oh, with them, this is, this is a constant thing, because there's constantly updates, there's constantly things that are changing.
They can monitor remotely.
They also have to go into this system and change anything that's got to do with upgrading of nine one one, additional carriers that are added, GIS mapping as well, as well as going into anything as far as new laws, which we know is changing all the time. Any time any of that has to change, they have to go in there and they correct this as well. As well as, this is our system that reports our micers, which is Michigan Incident Crime Reporting System, which by law, we have to report to. This generates those reports. They are the ones that handle that end of it and it forwards to the state, and if there's any glitches, any problems, they handle all that as well. So there's actually quite a bit that they do.
Did we buy that system from ID Networks?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the ID Network maintenance agreement, line item two oh seven zero 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 dash seven six eight point zero zero. About nine thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have server, Dell server support agreement for fifteen hundred and nine dollars.
This will be our main, main server, which is the hardware that supports all of our infrastructure, would be our CAD records management and such like that. This is a three-year contract, and this is three-year mission critical support. So if there was any issue, it's twenty-four seven, that they're on the line with us, I mean, this goes down, everything goes down. That is, that's the heartbeat of everything we're running over there, so. I'll make a motion that we support and approve the Dell server support agreement, the amount of one thousand five hundred and nine dollars, coming out of line item two oh seven dash seven six zero.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a new hire, full-time, Jay Bennett. Chief, wanna tell us about Jay?
Yes, Jay is a, actually a local from St. Clair County here. He currently, well, up until just recently, was working as a part-time officer up in the city of St. Clair. Comes highly recommended, especially by the chief there, is a good friend of mine, and actually not real happy with me that we're taking him off his hands. But I think, you know, after thorough background investigation, everything has come back very well with Mr. Bennett, and I think he will be an absolute asset to our agency, and nice to get some more young blood coming in, and eager to get out there and get on the road and get to work, so.
Where's Jay at?
Yeah, what's he looking like?
Come on up, Jay.
Which one is he?
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good, ready to become a Clay Township police officer?
I am.
All right.
Got your water wings?
Yeah, hand boots.
You know how to swim? Does anybody have any questions for Jay?
How long you been a officer in St. Clair?
I was in St. Clair for one year, almost to the date.
Right after high school or college?
Uh, right after college.
Where'd you go to college at?
Grand Valley, just boys in Grand Valley.
Good deal.
Good for you.
Have you always lived in St. Clair County?
Yeah, I live in St. Clair.
Okay, know the area well, down here?
Little bit.
So you wanna work with Mike and his team back there?
They seem like good guys.
Yeah, they are.
He's gotta go through field training, so we'll talk to him after that.
Always the case.
I'll make a motion that we approve the new hire, full-time officer Jay Bennett.
Support.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard. Who's our next victim? Nicholas Stewart?
Yes, sir.
Why, tell us about Nicholas?
Nicholas, also, well, one thing I just found out, as they both showed up here and met in the lobby and went, hey, how you doing? They both went to the academy together.
Oh, this is not good.
Didn't know that. And as you know, you know, we did, we did hold our testing, our background investigations, and as well as oral boards that, we grilled them pretty hard here, and the, these two definitely stood out above the rest. And no doubt, I think we're getting a couple of good officers here. Nick currently is, well, up until just recently, was working out in Keego Harbor as an officer, and he's looking to get back this way. Lives in Chesterfield Township, and he's hoping to drive east instead of west.
That's a big, long west drive. Anybody have any questions for?
How, how long were you in Keego Harbor?
I've been in Keego Harbor the last couple of months here. Prior to that, I was a full-time Beverly Hills Public Safety, both police and fire.
And where was that at?
Beverly Hills.
Oh, Beverly Hills, okay.
He doesn't wanna be a fireman.
No offense, George. He doesn't wanna be a fireman. You know Trangio?
I do. I know Chief very well. I spoke to him this morning.
Okay. I do too. Chief Coach, with the, with the potentially second new hire, where does that put us as far as capacity and, and needs of the Clay Township PD?
That's gonna put us right where we need to be. Basically, what we're doing is bringing these two extra people on with the new contract coming up for Ira Township. This is, this is one of the things that we're looking for, is trying to find part-time people, and get them to stay here is next to impossible, let alone finding full-time people. So basically, what we do is scale back a little bit, but go towards the full-time positions to plug this in there. That way, we know we are covered on all bases, and that's the problem we've had right now. I've been having to ship our sergeants to work these road shifts, which is taking away from their duties as being a road patrol supervisor, so it's really been hindering, you know, their job performance, so with this, we get the guys trained up, that's gonna take care of that end of it, so.
Which, which I did wanna mention to the board, and our, our contract with Ira, as far as performing police work, they actually approved it in a special meeting they had yesterday, or this past.
Today.
Today.
Today, yeah, we just got the email on it.
Yeah, and, uh, 'cause I told them we were going, going ahead with the new hires. They wanted to redefine the, the contract a little bit, not as far as the numbers or, or anything, but a little bit of definition. Their attorney, I mean, basically, we took the old contract that we had, they had with the St. Clair County Sheriff's, what, six years ago or so? And, but they approved it for one year, and, and what, we're gonna put that, bring that to our board at our next meeting. So I don't wanna put the cart before the horse, but.
That contract is up August first.
Yeah, yeah, the contract's up August first, and they approved it, so.
Are you thrilled?
I think we're sticking right along with it, so gotta help our neighbors.
Yeah.
So outside of some equipment issues and maybe a couple of vehicle issues, you think our staffing and everything else will be ready to go?
Yes, I think as far as that, this is gonna get us right where we need to be, no doubt about it. I mean, we've been really behind the eight ball and struggling, I mean, and we have been just unbelievably busy. I mean, unbelievably busy. I mean, not only us, I mean, everybody, fire department, everybody, it's been, it's been one of those years. And I don't see that, that's not gonna slow down anytime soon. I mean, it's just the nature of where we're sitting now. But that, this will bring us to where we need to be, and especially during these summer months, it's just killing us right now.
It's been a challenge too, 'cause we have personnel, medical.
Which hits us even harder.
Yep.
And of course, you know, this is a time of year, everybody wants vacations and that, and knock on wood, to this date, I have not had to deny a vacation to anybody, but I'm telling you, everybody's been pulling together to try to cover these things, and I mean, to do whatever we can. I mean, everybody wants their time off, be able to spend it with their family, so. And I gotta say, and I, and thank everybody in the department, because everybody's been real patient, everybody's been working together to make sure this happens. I mean, it's, I, I can sit there and say, there is no better department out there, and there is no better morale in a department out there. Everybody works together great, you don't hear any bickering or complaining, and let me tell you, after being in this job as long as I have, cops are some of the worst. Trust me. I mean, if there's nothing to complain about, they'll make it up.
Well, Mike, just the fact if they're complaining too much, you, you put your, you taser them, that usually.
That helps.
Chief Coach, I will make a motion that we approve your new hire, Nicholas Stewart. Hopefully, he is, molds right in with your department with the rest of the guys, because you do have a bunch of good guys over there.
I think they're afraid of the new lieutenant.
As well, they should be.
Quit laughing, Bill.
Okay, we have motion, do we have support?
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
Nicholas, this is gonna put you at the bottom of the totem pole, you know?
I've been there before.
Jay just got hired a couple minutes ago.
Ooh, that's funny.
I gotta put the time on the.
Yeah, timestamp, so. All right, no more discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Welcome aboard, Nicholas.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for your interest in our township.
Okay, last thing on the agenda. We have a request for a local government approval for Bugsy's American Grill to get a beer and wine license. And we have a resolution that we have to pass to allow them to submit their application.
I'll make a motion to approve the local government approval form for Bugsy's American Grill for a beer and wine license.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion?
What becomes of the, the previous Roadhouse permit?
Yeah, I'm not sure where the status.
I believe it was put in escrow.
Escrow?
As a, as collateral on the loan.
Okay, yeah. I'm surprised they didn't use that, or I, I don't know what's going on, but this is for a new beer and wine license?
Well, the purchaser is not who is running the restaurant.
Right.
So it's who's running the restaurant that's trying to obtain just a beer and wine license.
But to me, it's kinda like one in, one out, right? We're not adding more to the township, because this one is now sidelined.
Exactly. Yeah, it's locked up. Do we have support on that? Was that you?
Yes, Joanne.
I know they have good food. I like their pizza. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupfer?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next we have Board Member comments. And Cindy, do you have anything for us?
I actually have a laundry list, but then everyone will go, you took mine, so.
That's all right.
I'd like to say congratulations to our new officers, Officer Bennett and Officer Stewart. I hope you find your home here and enjoy it. I wanna thank our police and fire for helping out on Jobby Noonar, because I know that is a very tasking day for both of you guys. So I commend you for being out there all day and doing all that you do out there. My parting thought is to thank trustee Oregan for the assistance in helping me with the job descriptions for building official and inspector. That was much appreciated.
Okay, Mark?
Uh, yes, please. Congratulations to the new hires. Good job. We'll see you out in the street, 'cause I'm always going up and down, so. I drive the red van.
Really hope you don't see him on the street, Mark, but.
Planning Commission, we're gonna have a continuation of the public hearing for the special land use over on Point Trumbull. That's on July twenty-fourth, as well as the Small Social Club continuation, public hearing. Thank you.
Joanne?
I, I say welcome to Officer Bennett and Officer Stewart, and this is for Chief Coach to let him know that I drive by that little trailer that blinks that says you are going so fast in a certain miles an hour.
It's taking your pictures.
Oh, it blinks for you?
But my speedo.
You got off that road, I realized you can get that fast now.
My speedometer agrees with what you say on your speed. And I play games with it to see if it really works right. Just a little side note. It's fine, and I like, I'm glad to see it move around, too. Yeah, it's on middle, it's on middle channel, now it's on south channel.
Yeah, we, we could, um, the different citizens that see it and they ask for different placements, and as we check it out, if it's something we think's necessary, we make sure we get it out there.
That's good.
Sandy?
I attended the Elginak Pickle Tournament Parade last weekend, myself, Supervisor Bryson, and Treasurer Christie Hiltonin. We were invited on a float to join the Elginak City Council and went through the parade, and I think we saw. And I think we saw a ton of smiles and laughter. It was enjoyable to be there. That was actually the first time I'd been to the Pickle Tournament Parade. But I wanted to thank the Elginak City Council for that invitation for all of us to join them. And I think it sent a positive message that we're all kind of in this high-water thing together, and anything else that comes across the community.
We did our part to drop the water level that day.
We did. We threw some candy and squirted some bystanders, and it was fun. And congratulations to the new employees. Welcome, and I hope you enjoy your training period.
Chris?
Just a nod of gratitude, I think. I'm appreciative of our big three, Supervisor, right, the clerk and the treasurer, who are working consistently with the high water. And I really appreciate it at department heads. If I look back and when I started to now, and I take the chief's coach in his department, our fire department with Chief Rose, and our water department with John, they're just in a little different place in my mind than they were three, four years ago. And I'm appreciative of their hard work, their efforts, their hiring practices. It just solidifies every day why I live here. So, thank you.
Here, here. Congrats to the new guys and Gary, our new official, building official. Yeah, the parade, I was gonna say, in the past, it's always been the city mayor and myself that rides in a car, you know, in the front and waves. And gosh, it was, this was more fun. So, that's how this all came about, you know? Instead of just the mayor and myself, it was, we brought it up and got some loud music on there. And I think we're gonna try to recreate that for the turkey shoot parade on the island, so.
I'll be on that float.
I'll be on that one.
Okay.
I did hear that that float came in second place for their categories.
We did?
There was two categories we were in the running for, and we came in second.
Oh, really?
We have something that we're working for next year.
Yeah. But, yeah, we squirted a lot of, a lot of kids. I'd tell my girlfriend, throw the candy short so the kids would run out, and the guy blaps, get them wet. It was fun. And, hey, it's summertime. The water's warm. A lot of people are swimming. Be careful out there. I like to have my fun in the summer, too. But a lot of people get, tend to get hurt in the summer, too, by doing dumb stuff. So, think before you play too hard.
Lost one in St. Clair County.
Yep.
Up in St. Clair.
Yep, lost someone up there.
Young man.
But, yeah, especially with the high water, there's different challenges as far as things going on. And in fact, I wasn't, you know, I know there were some people, one of the phone calls I get all the time is, everyone's worried about the quality of water in the river now, the septic and everything. And I know the health department, they're going to do a series of water testing on the south channel, middle channel today. They're supposed to. And I should get a report tomorrow. But I seriously don't think there's really that big of an issue yet. But we'll find out for sure. I know we've done some testing in the past, but they're supposed to come out today to do some. They called us, Johnny, they called us Friday and wanted us to do it. I'm like, hey, I'm not gonna send a guy out there to, you know? So, and I asked them, well, what are you even gonna test for? They didn't even know what they were gonna test for at the time. Send the health department, I'll let them do their own, their job right, so. But other than that, everyone have fun and be safe.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn. Everyone good with that?
Support.
Support, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody.